To order. Clark, can you call the board please?
Angie Wolf.
Here.
Cindy Vitteen.
Here.
Mary Beth Schall.
Here.
James Cartman.
Yep.
Art Stotts.
Here.
Matt Curl.
Great. And I do have proof of posting, please run you for the pledge of allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America. To the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some, second.
Thank you both. Any questions or changes needed? Hearing none, Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do we have any public input? Nobody?
No.
Okay. And moving then on to our minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from July 14th? We're not there yet. How about June 14th?
Some, second.
Thank you both. Anyone see any needed changes? Not hearing any? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Uh, James?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Great, moving right along then. Updates to the middle school, high school remodel and elementary school construction.
Mike's here.
Hello, Mike.
Your floor is yours.
Thanks for having me.
Yes.
Got the summary document here again with some visuals and pictures. So, uh, high school, middle school, we basically wrapped up the bulk of the demolition. And now we started putting things back together. Yay. Um, along with a lot of mechanical improvements that, you know, changing out all the equipment, the air handling units, um, chillers. We just set the chillers up on the rooftop today with the seal structure. All that stuff gets cycling through. So, we're kind of in the heart of it now. July is like a big month where we're gonna, um, you know, redo the ceilings down the corridors, the vertical classroom units that bring, uh, air conditioning to the remaining classroom in the high school wing. We're gonna start flowing through and setting those units and finishing those through. And so, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of quick changes. It's gonna be exciting stuff this upcoming month. And we're making a lot of good progress and a lot of good manpower. So, in this document, you can kind of see that summary. Uh, we started painting some of the first ceilings. We started out in cafeteria where we're coating, um, that, uh, acoustic deck type stuff. That's exposed ceiling type stuff, uh, that's in cafeteria on some of those high school classrooms. Painting those white.
I can't really object. So, this wall, which is as you're facing out towards the hallway, the stage would be up here. They painted that as an accent wall. I did a little walk around today. If you want to check it out, I think it looks really nice. It's a dark green color, something like school color green, which is, it looks sharp. So, I had to point that out.
Look pretty crisp. But we're just getting into some of that stuff. So, but a lot of stuff.
Just send your next picture.
Yeah.
It's not in here, man.
We had to get these in, uh, Thursday. So, I'm always like, shoot, we just went one more half day. Like, I could probably have this one more, as much stuff as is going on in the remodel. Like, so, yeah. Um, so you can see this, you can start to see the front serving line, how we're gonna open that up. You can see that those are, those big openings are gonna be rolling grills. And it's gonna bring those serving lines out. So, the kids will be walking through the cafeteria versus going in the kitchen, which will be a nice flow and thing like that. And that, that front line's gonna get new tile. It's kind of demoed, it was this old brown tile. It's gonna be black tile, new tile there. Put kind of new ceiling right in front of there. So, you can kind of start to see some of these things taking shape. And then also in the kitchen there, you can see the a la carte side. We're gonna put another rolling security grill there. So, that's gonna open up really well for the kids who go into that section. It's kind of dark in there, but we're just got a framed wall too instead of like a curtain. But they were using, here we actually have a framed wall for a la carte where they can, it's gonna have tile on that wall too. So, the visual's gonna be really nice of, of kind of, as you look at direction, just a lot of open space and kind of new finishes into the kitchen there for the kids running the cafeteria. You can see we started framing the ceilings there. That's that, uh, high school main entrance where we kind of have a cloud ceiling design. But just to show for reference that we're starting to frame the ceilings and, and drywall ceilings. You can see the metal framing down the high school wing corridors where some of the areas above the lockers were infilling with drywall. It used to be this kind of older tack board seventy-ish. I don't know what you want to say, even older looking type of material that we're placing there to update and modernize. So, a lot of that stuff's already drywalled now. Um, this is just a shot of those south restrooms, the smaller ones that we're expanding. It's kind of hard to still get a good shot in there. Kind of just have to see it as we, but you can see we're progressing there. We've, uh, fully demoed that. It's sort of been reframed, plum, uh, did plumbing inside of there. It's, uh, inspected and some of it is drywalled there as well. Kind of start bringing all those bathrooms in the high school, finishing them out from top down here in the next few weeks. Um, this is in one of the high school classrooms and there's a vertical classroom unit sitting in there. And you can see those pipes next to the beam, those are the chilled, uh, water pipe in that runs to that unit now. They're kind of up in that left corner. And you can see some of the ductwork in the middle, um, that's gonna be exposed. All that will be painted white. Kind of, I think I have a picture of one ceiling we did. Uh, but you'll see here that wall be painted and it's, we just did a few more ceilings, uh, today where the, where there's no B C U's yet, but it's in the high school wing in the middle and they look really, really fresh. So, I think, once we get all this stuff in and then get it all painted, it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty nice. It's gonna pop pretty well. So, there's just a picture of one of the units, those classroom units, in case you're curious, kind of what they look like that are going through the high school wing. There's fifteen of them and through about fifteen, sixteen classes.
Supposed to be replacing the old, like, red storage things that were in there.
Uh, heating and cooling, both, right? So, they can be both capabilities in each classroom with a thermostat by the doorway for each classroom. And here's where we did one of our first classroom, uh, ceiling painting jobs that, um, this classroom didn't have a vertical classroom unit in it. So, we were able to do like six or seven of those early because they already had some ductwork to them, uh, from air handling units. But you could see it's a useful, but you could see like, uh, we painted that whole ceiling white there. So, it looks pretty fresh compared to like if you saw before of kind of how it looked.
The yellowing.
Yellowing and crowning and different colors of the ceiling and stuff like that.
The walls depending where we add as we can. So, that's what Brett and then Mark are working on a lot this summer as well.
Red color or still?
I don't know for sure if it's the, uh, traditional.
As you were saying beige and all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the classics wool colored beige off white too.
Um, any questions on the high school, middle school? Uh, underneath that. Okay, good.
Just real quick, Mike, I mean, my impression, I take at least one walk a day. It's great to just get around and see where people are working all over. Um, it seems like everything's going really well. You obviously, uh, you're in the trenches. Your impression, it's hard to believe it's only been three weeks.
Yeah, a lot of change.
So, I mean, I think for context, we're twenty-one days into this. So, I guess just from your perspective, everything is great where you expected it to be.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. Uh, that usually doesn't happen a lot in construction. Honestly, yeah, I'm coming to work and I feel like I'm jinxing myself or something. But yeah, so far, uh, we did a lot of setup work with it, knowing that we had the summer, you know, with a lot of the trades and the manpower and stuff. And so far, most everybody's come through. I mean, day to day, we always have our little bit of this. But in general, we are kind of hitting where we need to. I think we've been running like thirty, thirty to forty guys out there, like twenty-five to thirty-five, depending on as he's in this thing. So, fifteen mechanical guys, ten, like fifteen electricians. Like I said, there's a lot of manpower out there and that's what we need to get done through the summer with this kind of work. So, but it's all kind of lining up right now. So, that's good.
So, I did a walkthrough with Mike. I appreciate you walking through, showing me everything that you're doing. I couldn't be happier with just having the accessibility for you to walk us through and explain what's going on. I think that was great and I'd recommend anybody to do it. I think it was, it's great.
And wait until it's a little bit more official. So, you're not like, what are you doing that?
I understand.
Protecting me from yourself? Is that what you're telling me? Yeah, okay, I got it.
The only thing about construction, you're actually kind of excited about that. You're like, oh, yeah, I can see that.
Or you should wait till we're done.
Yeah, just wait till you're done with punch. Thanks for visiting though, yeah. It was nice to walk you through.
I appreciate you walking through with me on it instead of just kind of go find your way and look around.
Yeah, we, we encourage anyone now, come and see. We don't, we don't mind, you know, giving them little tours and, you know, talking through anything. So, that's how we run our jobs, so. Um, elementary school addition. So, elementary school addition, we actually, uh, started foundations today. That's a big update. So, we started digging footings. So, the earthwork building pad has, has been prepared. And so now, we're digging actual footings. We have the concrete guys out there, he's mobilized. And so they opened up, I think, a hundred to two hundred feet maybe this, today to start getting poured. I think they, they, they put it up to maybe like a hundred fifty because the rain might happen. So, we're a little bit like somewhere in between doing a decent amount, but maybe not too much. So, but, um, yeah, so we're getting started there. And that's like a four to six week duration. We'll be getting through all those foundations and stuff. And probably like three or four weeks in, we'll start underground work following that. Or a couple of weeks in, we'll start the, uh, the plumbing underground and that's an electrical underground, kind of follow, uh, the footings. And then the concrete guy will follow them directly after that, after a few weeks to start doing an actual slab upgrade. Um, and we're going from southeast going clockwise, like kind of where you, we come up to the building in that picture to the right there. In that doorway that's kind of on the, I guess, west side of the campus.
So, if you looked out this door today, you'd see a about eight foot hole right here when they started.
And just kind of going around that way, going from kind of southwest, north to east. It was kind of like, you kind of started kind of one direction, go to the other. It was kind of a toss-up. But one of the main things was, we did a bunch of fill on that, that north side where that ditch is. And the geotech that just asked if we could, if we could let that settle a little bit longer than the grade with all that fill. So, that's kind of why we started in the southeast form and anything. So, and then we got site utilities starting here in a couple of weeks. And that'll be like all the storm, the main storm piping, the main water lines, all that stuff. And that probably will be like four to six weeks. Our trade is, uh, our, our site utilities trade is saying, well, it'll take them about three to four weeks with all the weather and stuff. And other coordination, I've just gotta probably tack on a little bit there pretty into that. So, I mean, that's kind of the plan for the summer. Then we start going up after that. Not a lot of pictures there because it would just be more.
I think we're jerks.
Yeah.
So, I have a quick question. So, July fourth, we'll be shooting the fireworks off the block over in May though. But Lake Marion gets a lot of traffic and last year, a lot of people parked in the high school parking lot. So, all I'm saying is either we know that they're gonna be in the parking lot and we just kind of, I guess, lock your stuff up to make sure stuff. Or we say the parking lot's not accessible for people to watch fireworks. Somehow we had to post that. So, we made it clear because people are gonna come and we don't tell them not to. I'm just throwing that out there.
Is there a concern for people that?
Well, that's why I bring it up.
Probably not. I mean, we have a couple dumpsters out there. We have like some small, that forklift, which we can take the keys out, park it somewhere. We've got our construction fencing up. I mean, it's not fully secure, but at the same time, we know it was in a concrete base. It's not like a lot of materials people would probably want to take. It's reinforcing bar and stuff like that.
I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I appreciate that because, I mean, that is the thing. Every Fourth of July on jobs we have to have, like at our, we do the coordination meetings, we just have a big reminder. And then like the Thursday, Friday before, whatever the day, like Fourth of July, we, we talk with all our trades and kind of walk through everything pretty clearly one time before we leave for the weekend. Everything's locked down, everything's, you know? And at the end of the day, on the renovations, we leave the school pretty secure. I mean, on the outside, we lock all the perimeter doors and they're all locked and everything like that. So, that should still kind of be the same situation for, in terms of the existing school.
Thanks for bringing that up. But yeah, I guess if you feel comfortable with it, Mike, I certainly do. I mean, like you said, when you walk around there, even if it's after hours, I don't see a whole lot that unless you come with like a piece of heavy equipment yourself and somehow a flatbed trailer, you're gonna run off with something because it's all pretty big stuff at this point.
The only I would suggest is the dumpster, closing the door. I know it gets left open sometimes just so we don't have kids climb in there and someone gets hurt or something.
Than anything.
That way it's closed.
Yeah.
But that would be the only thing I would suggest.
Yeah, good suggestion. Double check that.
I don't know if you want to talk about this at all. These were the renderings that Chris had sent over.
Yeah, so, um, I think there was an action item, just like develop, uh, some nicer renderings in the front of the school. And kind of that's really just kind of what these are. And I think, uh, from my review, they looked pretty nice. Chris probably has some more architectural flavor to it, but.
So, I'm describing it to Ben before. And I'm excited about it, so I'm gonna do it. So, like over in here is actually where that existing door is. It comes off the middle school right now. So, I mean, that's actually gonna be closed by the new construction. So, that door that goes to the exterior right now at the end of the middle school hall will be butted inside of here, basically. And then, so with the entrance way, I mean, one of the things that we've seen in all of the buildings we've looked at is kind of the second story. It's clear story of windows to bring more natural light into the entrance. It's a huge like kind of wow factor. So, you can see the clear story windows up here above. And then, this is actually the library. So, the library being tucked back into the interior of the building. We talked about bringing natural light in, so the same deal there. I mean, you won't be able to sit sterile the window, but you'll have natural light still coming in. And then this is actually the gymnasium here, which we had eliminated a few of the windows, but not all of them in one of our passes as kind of a budget saving measure. Uh, but there are still a few windows, uh, in that gym. This would be the main office area. So, like where receptionist would be is inside here. There's a second set of doors in here. So, that's the secure entrances between this and the second set of doors. And then to do that, you're gonna have to get buzzed into the office and then through. Um, this is a conference room over here. And then, yeah, you just go down that outside, couple of offices. And then there's windows all along that side of the building too. But for context, if you remember where that ditch came out over here, as you were over by like the track in the football field where that ditch came out previously, that's basically where the corner of the building is or will be. So, that corner of the building is right where the ditch came out. And then as you talked about on the site work, the actual ditch itself is gonna be buried and then closer to the football field. So, yeah, it's, it's nice to see it and kind of then start to put all the puzzle pieces together. But I think in terms of the entrance, we were looking for something that was inviting a bit of a pop, but not over the top. And I guess for me, that kind of checks the boxes. It's like there's some, there's some appeal to it, but at the same time, it's not like ridiculous. Yeah, otherwise it wouldn't go well with the rest of the.
Yeah.
And we have talked about, and this Michael cringe hearing me say this because he knows the budget. I mean, we have talked about depending where things are at next summer and how everything plays out over the next twelve months, trying to do something with the high school entrance. To at least tie in a little bit aesthetically.
Get that a nice clean look.
Pop that a little bit too.
Yeah.
So, we'll see.
I have had people ask me about putting some plumbing bathrooms out by the football field. And I, I said, I hear what you're saying, but of all of the football games that I went to, the spring and fall, almost all the time, they had to walk all the way to the school to go to the bathroom. So, I said, and I asked somebody about it and said, the plumbing to have the pipes freeze and stuff when it's that far away from the main building is an issue. So, I'm just throwing it out there with that. I have had people ask me, is there any talk or interest in doing that?
Well, that certainly wouldn't be something we do with this. I mean, because that was very clearly not a part of the referendum. Now, I think something to keep in mind as we have conversations over the next twelve months about Fund Forty-Six. I mean, if that's something that the board thinks is a priority, that could certainly go on in Fund Forty-Six.
There's enough events that go up, you know, so it's definitely worth looking into something.
The cost of what the cost of, porta potties aren't cheap to, to run them out there and to have three of them out there for that many months.
So, yeah, someone just said, if, if you're doing all of this construction and things are torn up, just think about it.
Do it at the same time.
We hadn't talked about it, so I said, yeah, sure, I'll bring it up. And I can't.
Good. Sorry.
That's great.
I mean, I don't know, obviously, I don't know what they would look like for the, like the waste and things like that. But I mean, there is only water. There is water exits.
Yeah.
There's that little shed that's over on the north side of the football field that, for purposes there is there water. So, even if they need to irrigate the fields, that's where they tie it in to irrigate the fields. So, I mean, there is water holes out there. The waste part of it, I don't know what that would look like.
You don't have to worry about that freezing as much as the water.
No, it's typically, but.
No, but that is, uh, there's some, these are just, yeah, so that thing from where you have active lines in general.
The good news is, at least for the short term, if people didn't want porta potties, it's gonna be about two hundred feet closer to the football field.
Right, yeah.
I'm not even fully joking. If it was that big of a issue to have a nice bathroom, this door could get opened up and people could operate it and use bathrooms in the entrance.
Well, I couldn't think of a school that, that I went to that actually had a separate bathroom really close to.
I don't know, I didn't pay attention to it.
I don't think there was.
Oh, I had to walk all the way in the.
Even like Kukaboo, you had to walk all the way, basically up the little hill just to get.
I don't know. That's why I told, that's why I told the person that brought up that I said, yeah, but you have a point and so I'll, I'll throw it out there.
The only other thing I was gonna say is if there's been any talks about utilizing the concrete space out front, if we adding picnic tables or something, I don't know if it was the whole COVID response thing. I know it was utilized way more this past year than ever before when utilizing outdoor space for classrooms and stuff, but with the little ones there.
Good idea.
I heavily thought about, I mean, it's with no auditorium for at least a few more years. Such a massive space that you throw some tables out there. I don't even, they make those cool like triangle pergola thing, you know? And then the months where you're not winterizing things, could it become a nice little grounds for people to utilize however, however, I don't know. I mean, it just seems like that's kind of a in-your-face spot to, if you spruce up a little bit rather than just a big concrete, concrete space, you know?
Well, I definitely think from middle school, high school perspective, that's one thing we learned in the pandemic is like especially the lunch thing. If those kids have the option to, they would just soon go outside. Even on some days when it was like forty and I was like, why are you sitting outside? They were up there.
Fresh air, yeah.
So, I mean, that could be something for them especially. I mean, one cool thing that's not even on here, we just went through and talked about playground stuff. So, the hardscape playground area for the elementary school is eighty-five by one thirty-eight, if my memory serves me correctly.
So, playground, hardscape adjacent areas are finally pretty nice, like for the young kids as a time to play area plus that kind of grass. It would be out there north, put like a shop put in this is.
And then the. Farther than. That's the, that's over.
Yeah, so.
Where's the shop?
Should be some green space even north of that, stuff like that, so.
And the soft skate was, yeah, I mean, seventy-six by like a hundred, I believe, is the soft skate playground.
Very nice.
So, I mean, for the elementary kids, there will be a lot of outdoor space back there.
It's just such an unfortunate, I want to say eyesore, but it's like, you know, it's just a huge piece of concrete. I don't know, yeah.
Yeah. Like, even if it's simple as picnic tables out there, kind of makes it, breaks it up a little bit so it doesn't look so.
Well, if kids are waiting after practice for rides or.
Yeah, they can sit on the picnic tables or even like I said, if they have the option of coming outside to eat lunch versus staying inside, even if it's for ten minutes. And I said, yeah, they would most more than likely come outside and, you know, kind of kind of create.
And even maybe like some picnic bench or like the benches.
Or something like that.
Bench of the grass there.
Yes.
Could be, you know, to offset the fun. Could we get some donations for picnic bench?
You could probably easily find enough people that would spot, you know, you can get their name, plaque around it.
Yeah, get the little plaque on there or whatever.
I think that'd be pretty easy to fund those.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have the design services though. Mike and Andy or somebody to. Propose a spot for the eyesore.
I have no.
You said you weren't gonna call it an eyesore.
You know, one thing I will have to say is when I smi, I started coming to the high school, I thought that the end, like, the, like, bigger entrance was the high school entrance. And Bailey's like, no, the high school entrance. I'm like, high school entrance by the gym? No, that's the middle school entrance. I'm like, what? And he's like, yeah, the high school entrance is on the other side. And I was like, this little in-bitty entrance, that's the high school. I'm like, oh, okay.
There's this way of putting, you know, middle school, you know, late, you know, almost put a, is there a sign out? Is there a sign?
I never paid attention because I always look at it and think it's like the main entrance. So, you would think, you know, it's like the high school, like that's the high school entrance versus, you know, I totally didn't even know.
What would make that different? I mean, to me, would be as if we were still in the K five, six, eight, nine, twelve like model in terms of principals and things. But the fact that the principal's offices and things are right inside that entrance, to be honest, in a lot of ways, it is the main entrance. It is the focal point.
Right, yeah.
Whereas the other entrance in the front is basically just for students to come in and out. But in terms of the focal point of the building, where the action is per se.
Right.
That's one of the things we actually talked about in the design process was the possibility of moving the offices back over there for the high school. But that was when we were thinking about, yeah, that was just, and that was a different price tag.
Work and things.
Yeah, we're just a lot more involved in that. So, I definitely know what you're saying. I agree. I think to a certain extent, um, at least as long as we remain in the model that we're in in terms of leadership, it'll probably remain that way. Now, the nice part of, or the intriguing part about that other entrance though, the high school entrance, is obviously it's right there and it's right next to the highway. So, if we spruce that up at some point.
Make it stand out a little bit.
Make it stand out a little bit more.
Like it's, that's their section. Because now you're gonna have, the elementary is gonna have this amazing entrance. And then you've got the middle school entrance, which is more of a grander entrance. And then if you kind of compensated that with, then the high school entrance, make that more of a, you know, I don't think there'd really be a whole lot of things you would have to do. Just kind of, you know, build out the structure a little bit.
I will say the interior itself is gonna be nice.
Right.
Because like they're, they're doing sheet rock work right now to put in some candle lights and things like that. And there's gonna be a logo imprinted on the floor.
Oh, that's.
Flooring's gonna be, um, not just your standard hallway tile. It's gonna look like wood flooring, basically the higher end, uh, L V T flooring. So, I mean, once you get in the doors, that's gonna look much nicer.
I was gonna say, which logo?
Come on, really?
No, I, I am just, just totally, we get, this can be done offline, but on the, the, the middle school, do we say, does it say Wisconsin Heights I and then the elementary school? Or because it, the whole building is Wisconsin Heights, do we just say elementary school? Just Wisconsin. Does not have to be, but I'm just curious. I don't think there's a big Wisconsin Heights thing about the middle school. So, I just wonder if the word is separated.
I'm making pay attention now when I drop off a kid tomorrow.
I already built a sign, sorry. No, that can be changed. Yeah, so we can talk about that.
Just something I ended up looking at it, I wasn't sure. I was trying to envision what the other entrance is.
I do agree, but if one says Wisconsin Heights Elementary, it should say Wisconsin Heights Middle.
Right, it should be universal on every one.
Or if that main entrance is the main entrance, maybe there, but I don't.
But if that's not really the main entrance for the elementary school, though, it's kind of like, you know, it really is two separate buildings, yet connected. You know what I mean, in some of that? And because when I think of the high school, I always think of the middle school because that's where they've always been. But like the elementary school, I think is kind of their own little.
Well, we talked about this one, I'll admit, when Chris and I and Jim were talking about this months ago. Obviously, the notion was we were transitioning from two separate schools that had two separate names. And now we were bringing this together. We're gonna be Wisconsin Heights, like we wanted the identity of it frankly. I'll look at the other ones because, yes, you look at it every day and you don't even pay attention to what it says. I don't remember, but I, I can tell you this was purposeful.
And I can sadly see that.
We're bringing this together and it's, it's, yes, this is what we are now, Wisconsin Heights Elementary School.
Which has never been said before.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'll look at the other ones.
Very cool.
Anything else for Mike? Just appreciate it, Mike.
Yes. Thanks. Thank you. We'll see you soon, not too soon. I was just gonna say, you posted a video of them taking a truck through the dirt and stuff like that. I was just thinking like, there's gotta be little kids out there just fascinated with the trucks going by. I was just gonna say, you did a video of them taking a truck through the dirt and stuff like that, I was just thinking, like, there's gotta be little kids out there just fascinated with the trucks going by.
Oh, yeah.
I know, that's so hard, that's hard, but just you get a video of this, it was kind of cool. Alright, moving on. Then on to number, on to section five, do I have a motion to combine five one to five three?
Second.
We go with.
Oh, I heard Matt, oh, Mary Beth.
Mary Beth, give it to me.
Alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Alright, great to have Matt on board and thank you to Tracy, any, no? Alright, carrying nothing, Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Do we have a motion to approve, or let's see? Yeah, six one, it is a motion, right, go first, okay, to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two employee handbook as we have reviewed previously.
I'll second.
Um, any last minute talk, speak now for the last piece?
At least until next you go.
Right. Mary Beth? James?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two student fees as we've also discussed?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Another discussion?
Appreciate the change, like I said last time, it's student friendly, it's staff friendly, it's not a huge financial ask, but yet it still does benefit our kids and our families, so I appreciate the support.
Alright, Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the co-curricular code of conduct handbook, oh no, we didn't.
Student and co-curricular, it's eight one and eight two.
Eight one and eight two, I can't see.
You wanna combine them?
Yes, you're fine, she's going good. Okay, we'll combine eight one, eight two, do we have a motion?
James did.
I'll second him, thanks Angie. Any other last minute questions, comments? Hearing none, Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. On to district business, do I have a motion to approve a donation of twenty-six hundred dollars to the special education department from the Sontprairie Healthcare Foundation and Wisconsin Heights community supporters?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second, Angie.
Angie and James, yes, thank you very much, very exciting.
Well, thank you so much.
Do we have anything earmarked specifically or just a?
I don't believe so at this point.
Alright, well, thank you. Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Future meeting dates, just one note, so we will have the board retreat here, and we're gonna just order in some food and get right to work, since it's Monday, we're pleased it's open, so we just figured, just come right here. So that's all for that, otherwise, do I have a motion to approve, do I have a motion to adjourn? It's so weird not having your computer and mic right there. Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well, thank you, everyone.
So quick before we scatter, for the.